You're watching Cable 2.
Good evening and welcome to the June 11th, 2024 Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools Board of Education meeting. I am Deanna Kaplan, Board Chair, and I appreciate your attendance, and I also say good evening to our viewers on Cable 2. Will you please rise as we start the meeting with a pledge of allegiance and remain standing as you are able for the invocation given by Board Member Susan Miller?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will open tonight with an inspirational quote, and this is from Henry Ford. If everyone is moving together forward, then success takes care of itself. And now we will have a moment of silence to honor the following Winston-Salem Forsyth County employees that have passed away since May 1st. A math teacher passed away on June 6th, a bus driver from transportation, May 13th, and then a magnet stop assistant from transportation on May 2nd. Thank you. Thank you, Board Member Miller. Our next order of business tonight is our agenda review. Do I have a motion to amend the agenda to go back into close after we adjourn our open meeting and to move our personnel report from the consent agenda to an action item after our closed session?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
So I have a motion by Board Member Coon, a second by Vice Chair Bohannon, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor. Thank you, that is unanimous. Our next order of business is our special recognitions. First, Dr. Kimberly Forbes, our Director of CTE, will present the Career and Technical Education Teacher of the Year, James P. Glover from East Forsyth High School.
Good evening, distinguished board members and Superintendent McManus. I am pleased to introduce you to Mr. James Patrick Glover, our very own Teacher of the Year and drafting extraordinaire at East Forsyth High School. If you don't notice, his shirt says CTE, coolest teachers ever. So that's what CTE really stands for. Mr. Glover is a true champion for his students' futures. He's a master at crafting top-notch curriculum, working hand-in-hand with industry partners to ensure his courses are packed with the latest technical skills and industry certifications students need to land their dream jobs. Thanks to his leadership, over 82% of CTE concentrators at East Forsyth have walked out with resume-building credentials in the past three years. That's an incredible accomplishment. But Mr. Glover goes far beyond just teaching skills. He's passionate about making sure every student graduates ready to thrive in their chosen career path. They leave his classroom equipped with knowledge, technical abilities, and real-world experiences, the perfect recipe for success. Here's what Mr. Rusty Hall, Mr. Glover's principal, had to say. Students practically stampede to join his class. It's not just about the curriculum, it's about the support, guidance, and recognition they receive. Mr. Glover creates a truly special environment for learning. And it seems one of Mr. Glover's students summed it up perfectly. Mr. Glover works tirelessly to connect with each student on a personal level. He truly wants us to become the best version of ourselves. This dedicated student will graduate having taken a whopping five courses with Mr. Glover. I would also like to recognize Mr. Glover's wife tonight, Karen Glover, that's here. She's a second-grade teacher at Kernersville Elementary School, so she also is an educator. Mr. Glover, your commitment to your students and dedication to excellence are truly inspiring. We are incredibly proud to have you represent Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools as you move on to compete for the State CTE Teacher of the Year title. You embody everything a great teacher should be, and we thank you.
Next, Andrew Kraft, the Director of Arts and Extended Learning, will present the 2024 Music Performance Adjudication Superior Rating Recognizations.
Good evening, distinguished board, Madam Chair, Vice Chair Bohannon, Superintendent McManus. We are thrilled to recognize outstanding secondary music programs and their directors this evening. Music Performance Adjudication is a performance assessment for secondary band, chorus, and orchestra programs. It provides teachers and students with a feedback and a rating. MPA events in North Carolina are sponsored by either the North Carolina Music Educators Association or the North Carolina Bandmasters Association. At this point, I'm going to turn things over to Mr. Eugene Mabry, our lead music teacher for K-12. Mr. Mabry?
Thank you, Mr. Kraft. Ensembles perform selections from an approved music list for a panel of judges and sight-read a piece of music that they've never seen before. The four ratings from each of the judges will be combined into one of the following ratings: superior, which will be considered an A, excellent, considered a B, average, a C, and so on. The directors of the music programs that received a superior rating are here this evening to be recognized on behalf of their students and their amazing music programs. We will start with Atkins High School Chamber Orchestra and Wind Ensemble being received by Greg Murphy. A combination, which is not easy to do, East Forsyth Middle School and Paisley Magnet School combined orchestras, received by Ms. Katie Wall. Our amazing eighth-grade advanced band, Anne Jazzin Dragons, and students from solo and ensemble MPA, received by Ms. Mary Catherine Bowman Cho. Another fantastic band here is the eighth-grade band from Lewisville Middle School by Mr. Collins Cho. One of our wonderful advanced eighth-grade choirs, Lewisville Middle School, being received by Ms. Minion Dobbins. Paisley IB, which received a Superior Flute Soloist Award at MPA, received by Mr. Noah Brown. Reagan High School Mixed Choir, also received by none other than Ms. Minion Dobbins. And I have to take a deep breath for this one. Reagan High School Chamber Orchestra, Wind Ensemble, Symphonic Orchestra, Chamber Orchestra 2, Jazz Band 1, Jazz Band 2, Jazz Combo, and 71 solo and ensemble superiors, received by Mr. Kenneth Tyser. Another amazing group is the RJ Reynolds Acapella, received by Josh Settlemeyer. One of the hardest-working teachers that I know who just doesn't sleep, just works all the time, like many of the others up here, Walker Town Middle School and Walker Town High School bands, both superior ratings, received by Mr. Quincy Lundey. And another deep breath coming up, from the West Forsyth High School Wind Ensemble Symphonic Band, Jazz Band 1, Jazz Band 2, and 17 superiors at solo and ensemble MPA, Mr. Tom Shoemaker. And last but not least, another fantastic group, or actually two groups, West Forsyth High School Concert Choir and Mixed Chorus under the leadership of Mr. Jacob Cook. Could everyone give a final round of applause for all of our directors and their ensembles?
Next, Justin Dyson, our Executive Director of Facilities, will announce the 2023-2024 Clean &amp; Green School Winners.
I don't think I'm going to be doing any announcing, but I am here, Justin Dyson. Good afternoon, Chair Kaplan, Vice Chair Bohannon, Superintendent McManus, and members of the board. I'm here to announce who is actually going to announce the Clean &amp; Green winners. So that is going to be Aldona Towner and Andy Zabit from the City of Winston, who will be announcing the winners of the Clean &amp; Green Schools Award for 2324 school year.
Good evening. I'm Aldona Towner, and this is Andy Zabit, and she is the new Executive Director of Keep Winston-Salem Beautiful. Thank you for the opportunity to come here tonight and present these awards. Clean &amp; Green is a partnership between the Winston-Salem Garden Club Council, Keep Winston-Salem Beautiful, and Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools. The Garden Club Council of Winston-Salem Forsyth County was founded in 1932 to help protect, preserve, and beautify our environment. We do this through giving awards, grants, and providing volunteers. We strongly support the Clean &amp; Green School Contest because it promotes environmental education and campus beautification in our schools. We've provided volunteer judges since at least 2005. Our volunteers visit and evaluate the schools with an emphasis on encouraging and thanking them for their time and effort. In addition to supporting Clean &amp; Green, since 2019 alone, Garden Club Council has granted $34,000 to invest in our schools. Schools that have received grants include Wiley Middle School Trees &amp; Shrubs, Haynes Magnet School Raised Beds and Native Pollinator Plants, Reynolds High School Trees, Spies Global Food Forest, Meadowlark Middle School Shrubs &amp; Trees, Carter High School Raised Beds and Landscaping, Atkins High School Memorial Garden, and Brunson Caleb Creek Whittaker and Sherwood Forest Elementary, who have also received grants. Thank you again for the opportunity to tell you about Garden Club Council and our commitment to Forsyth County Schools and the Clean &amp; Green School Contest. And now Andy is going to provide, is going to give out the awards.
The Downtown School. Morgan Elementary. Winston-Salem Preparatory Academy. Lowrance Middle School. Lewisville Middle School. Moore Magnet Elementary School. And Dick Lathan Elementary School. Thank you guys so much. Come around the pod for her.
At this time, we will hear public comments on the agenda items only. If you've signed up to speak, we expect civility. Please be kind, considerate, respectful. Direct your comments only to me as Board Chair and not to anyone in the audience. No, we cannot talk about sensitive and private student or personnel information in this public setting. Please know that each public comment is heard, and there's a follow-up process to address your questions or concerns. You have three minutes to speak. If you have more to share, always know you can email us directly. So our first speaker is Jadeja Robinson. I'm not sure if I'm saying that correctly.
Good evening, board members. I am Jadeja Robinson, a math teacher at Paisley Middle School. I'll be advocating for the renewal of the district's contract with Wayfinder. In one of my favorite Wayfinder lessons this year, students were tasked to complete the sentence, "I feel most like myself when..." My response, because I love to participate in our activities as well, was "I feel most like myself when I am alone outside on a sunny day, sitting on the ground, reading a good book, and eating even better food." From students, I heard these responses. "I feel most like myself when I am cooking, when I'm spending time with my family, when I am playing video games with my online friends." And my personal favorites, "I feel most like myself when I'm with my dad, and I feel most like myself when I'm hanging out with my mom." Now, this activity was only the warm-up of our lesson for that day, and you can already see how through Wayfinder's carefully curated lessons, students reflect on what is most important to them, they learn more about what their peers value, and they get to learn the same about me. Learning more about themselves, cultivating peer-to-peer and peer-to-teacher relationships have so many positive implications that make for healthier and safer communities and schools. Because of our consistent use of Wayfinder this year, my homeroom was able to engage in meaningful and respectful conversations about topics like standing up against bullying, creating personal boundaries, respecting others' boundaries, supporting marginalized groups, cultivating good friendships, and cutting our parents some slack. Even though we as a class very rarely, oh, sorry, even though we as a class never 100% agreed on the best way to approach these topics, my students and I sharpened up some very important skills. We grew in our abilities to be critical thinkers, caring, open-minded, and empathetic. My school, Paisley Middle, as an IB school, recognizes the importance of these skills. Wayfinder is a company that equips teachers to explicitly teach these skills to our students, also recognizes the importance of these skills. I strongly encourage the board, in line with North Carolina's portrait of a graduate, to continue to recognize the importance of these skills by renewing the district's contract with Wayfinder. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Next, Aidan Chaudry.
Hello. My name is Aidan Chaudry. I just graduated eighth grade from Paisley IB. I'm here to address the fact that some of you would like to remove the use of Wayfinder in schools. I strongly disagree with this decision because Wayfinder's really helped me and my class throughout the year. This has been done by the sharing and socializing aspect of Wayfinder and the engaging effect that it can have on a class. It is good to talk more, it is good to talk about more than just school subjects in a classroom. Being able to talk about our personalizing class makes you feel like a safe space. I feel as if I can speak freely or with no judgment. There are some people, especially in my class, who benefit from this effect. These people are very outgoing and like to talk a lot without limits. Wayfinder is also helpful because it can help people understand, help, because it can help people understand you better and learn more about you as a person. For example, there have been multiple Wayfinders where you're asked a question, and you can either agree, slightly agree, strongly agree, or disagree, slightly disagree, or strongly disagree. Once you've answered the question, you're given time to explain why you chose that answer. These types of questions are better than answering no questions because you're given a chance to elaborate on your answer or being able to be more specific. And it's questions like these that are, allow people to get to know you more. I believe this is the perfect environment to have in a classroom made for enrichment. In conclusion, I believe schools should keep the use of Wayfinder for years to come. Thank you.
And thank you very much. Next, Dwight Thompson.
Good afternoon, Board of Education and Superintendent McManus. I hope everyone is doing well. My name is Dwight Thompson, Jr., and I'm a rising ninth grader at Atkins High School and attended Paisley IB Middle School the past school year. Today, I'm here to discuss the topic of whether Wayfinder should be continued in our schools. For anyone that's on the fence about it, my experience with Wayfinder this school year is something that I'll never forget. Wayfinder has taught me to communicate better, see things in other people's perspectives, and be compassionate with my classmates. I would say at first, no one wanted to use Wayfinder. We really all thought it was a waste of time and just some way, some way our school can make our classes better. But we realized that Wayfinder has impacted us so much, and it made us be able to be comfortable to share our experience and how we felt without being judged. At the end of the day, Wayfinder has helped students grow as a person and strive to be better. Wayfinder has turned my math class from a bunch of socially awkward teens to a class of full, to a class of full, to a full class of inbred kids ready to learn educationally and socially. I hope the board will realize how important Wayfinder is, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, Karen Cuthrall.
Good evening, members of the Winston-Salem Forsyth County Board of Education and Superintendent McManus. Tonight, I'm here to emphasize the critical importance of social-emotional learning, SEL, in our schools. My first exposure to SEL was at home as a little girl on the south side of Winston-Salem. My papa would ask me, "How are you feeling, spunky?" Later in kindergarten at First Baptist Church, Ms. Hairston would also ask me how I felt. I didn't have the words to express myself fully, but they let me know that my feelings mattered. As I grew older, people stopped asking me about my feelings. They had no idea how important this was in a child's life. Since they did not ask, I learned to suppress my feelings, becoming unaware of my own emotions. This lack of self-awareness, domain number one in SEL, led to decades of guilt and shame after traumatic experience with my pastor when I turned 18. If I had been more self-aware, I might not have been spared that burden. Better self-management, domain number two, reduces school violence and increased social awareness, domain three, fosters empathy for our students facing homelessness, struggling with their sexuality or suicidal thoughts, or dealing with the loss or abandonment by their parents. Improved decision-making skills, domain number four, can prevent students from turning to drugs in our school's bathrooms. And strong relationship skills, domain number five, can help educators support students' path to graduations rather than hindering them. SEL skills are not being taught in the homes because, like many adults sitting here, we just don't know what to do and we have a lack of knowledge. SEL is essential for everyone in our school community: students, teachers, staff, administrators, leadership, and the Board of Educational Officials. It shifts our focus from trivial disputes to important questions like, how are we going to hire more mental health staff for our schools? DPI mandates SEL in schools. We are still feeling the ramifications of COVID-19. The root cause of all the trauma that took place at Parkland this year was due to unmanaged emotions. Unfortunately, the students and staffs were not well-versed in SEL. If they had mastered SEL, many of the traumatic incidents will not have surfaced. Academics and cultural responses to SEL programs go hand-in-hand. You cannot separate them. Great SEL touches the lives of individuals and creates great school communities. We need cultural responses to SEL today, and we'll need it next year and beyond. Thank you.
Thank you. We have six discussion items tonight. First, Dr. Effie McMillan, our Chief Equity Officer, and Frank Pantano, our Executive Director of Choice and Magnet Schools, will give us a fostering diverse schools update.
Good evening, board.
A little height challenge, let's adjust. Superintendent McManus, Board Chair Kaplan, and Vice Chair Bohannon. We're excited to be here today to give you an update on where we are right now with the Foster and Diverse Schools grant work. With us, you'll notice there's a Teams link, so partners that we are working with in this work have joined us so that they can share a little bit, give a high-level overview of some of the work that they're doing alongside us and how they're supporting our efforts, and then be able to answer any questions that might, might come up. So we're going to jump just straight in to give a project status update. And so as you recall, through this work, we are working through four phases. We are currently in Phase 2, which is our stakeholder engagement. Part 1, which will run from now until December, is coupled with a number of things. And so just to kind of give you an update of where we are, and then I'm going to introduce one of our partners that's going to be helping us with the stakeholder piece, is that we've been working diligently to create a survey. So Steering Committee, hats off, we have some board members that are on the Steering Committee, quite a few community members, and internal staff that have been serving on the Steering Committee since this work began and have really played a role in giving input on how we move about engaging our community to make sure that we don't miss any segment across Forsyth County. And so one of the pieces we've started with is the development of a survey. You'll notice when you check your emails later that it has gone out to all parents and staff. It's just one way of getting information and feedback from the community. The other part of that, which I'll introduce our partner with that in just a moment, will be around facilitated dialogues. So those will be, some of them will be structured and some a little unstructured, but we will be, we have a very ambitious goal to engage 8,000 families. What I want to say before I introduce our partner that is helping us with the community engagement piece, while both partners are, but the ones who is the organization that will be helping to facilitate the dialogues, is that throughout this whole process, we want to make sure that it's transparent, that it's a very transparent process. We also want to make sure that we're engaging in fair process. And what fair process simply means is that this is a large body of work that we're tackling as a district, and it comes with making big decisions that the board will eventually have to vote on. Anytime you're doing any type of work, it's important will eventually have to vote on. Anytime you're doing any type of work, it's important that you get stakeholder voice. You have to get voice from a wide representation of those that you serve to inform your decision. That is our aim and goal with the goal that we have of 8,000 people across, that includes students, parents, guardians, and staff members. Once we have all of that data from the various ways that we want to capture information from them, that means taking a look at all of that raw data, synthesizing it, and then being able to move forth with a proposal. Everybody won't get what they want. That's not how it ever works. But I think it is important, and what's been raised by the Steering Committee, is that people see how their voice was heard and how it impacted the decisions. And so this is just the first round of engagement that we're going to be going through. And then the next part kicks off in January of when we will be taking back what our proposal is. We won't have a proposal until we've engaged with families through December. So around January, February is when we'll kick off the next part of the engagement, and then be able to come back to the board with a final comprehensive plan and presentation that then you will, it'll come for a vote to see how we move forward. So we want to make sure that throughout the process that it is transparent and that we are engaging our families in very meaningful ways to get their voices, voices heard. So our first partner, I hope that, I didn't see her name on here, but hopefully she's, she is here, is Tyronda Mentor with Urban Strategies. We did go through an RFP process, and through that RFP process, we had vendors that submitted their proposals. The vendor that we ultimately decided to move forward with was Urban Strategies. And so I'm going to turn it over to Tyronda Mentor to give just an overview of the work that they will be doing alongside us as it relates to stakeholder engagement.
Yes. Good evening, and good evening to the Board, Superintendent McManus, and thank you, Dr. McMillan, for this opportunity to give a high-level overview of our work in partnership with you all related to your Foster and Diverse Schools Grant. Urban Strategies is a grassroots, full-service organization that works at the intersection of housing, community, and economic development. We are implementing place-based work in Winston-Salem in partnership with the Housing Authority of the City, and we are excited about the work that we're doing on the ground in partnership with residents in the community. Our role on this project is to facilitate in-person and virtual stakeholder engagement sessions. Our aim is to capture the authentic voices, the hopes, the desires of parents, caregivers, and guardians, students, and staff in the design of student assignment plans. Our reach will be countywide, ensuring opportunities to include individuals who are less often engaged in these types of projects. We're excited to be conducting these meetings again using various platforms, in-person and virtual. And if it means getting out in the community, as I shared earlier, doing the crack, the grassroots engagement opportunities to hear authentic voices, Urban Strategies will do that as well. So at a high level, that's what we're going to be doing now, starting now until December, and we're looking forward to partnering with you all in this regard.
Thank you, Tyronda. So I'll turn it over to Frank.
Hello, everybody. I am a little different height here, so let's fix that.
Everybody, I'm Nabil Delany. I'm here to represent the Plural Connections Group. Thank you so much for having us. It's a real honor to, to get to work with the School Board and Dr. McMillan and Tyronda's team and everyone else involved in this great initiative. So we're a research lab that's based at Northeastern University in Boston, Massachusetts. Our mission is to use data and design tools to try to foster pluralism, which is a more inclusive response to diversity in society. And a lot of our work to date actually is focused on how we might foster more diverse and integrated schools. And so we have a project where we looked at, across the country, across a few thousand school districts across the US, how different districts might redraw their boundaries in order to foster more diverse and integrated schools. And just last year, we worked right down the street from you all in Charlotte Mecklenburg. We worked with Charlotte to explore how we can start to, really to Dr. McMillan and Tyronda's points, factor in the voices of different community members into that redrawing process. So how do we learn the values that different communities have, different schools might have, et cetera, and really factor those different, sometimes frankly, competing, but how do we factor those different values in, in order to inform policy changes that will, will further the districts and families' objectives? And so if we go to the next slide, we can kind of give a quick update on what we've been up to so far.
Okay, I'm going to click slides and just know that Frank is on standby right here too, Nabil.
Okay, great. Oh, wow, it worked. So, thank you. So most recently, we've actually, to Dr. McMillan's point about the survey, we've worked with this team to develop a survey, which hopefully you should all have access to now. The point of that survey is really to understand what families do value. So what are, when it comes, you know, the goal of this grant, the name is the Foster and Diverse Schools Grant, but I think the team is very mindful and constantly reflecting on the fact that there's a lot of different things that, that families and students and parents might value when you think about the, the schools that they're attending. And so we're trying to learn through this survey, as well as the conversations that Tyronda mentioned, what are some of those values? How do those values really stack up against each other? And, and really do that analysis over the next several months through December, through the first stage here, to understand how those values vary across families. We also, to Dr. McMillan's point about really ensuring that people feel heard, that they're, they don't feel like they're just giving their feedback into a black hole and never really getting a feedback back about how their voice is shaping the process, we're, we're going to be developing a platform system where we'll share back some of the things we're learning through the survey, through the conversations with the community, so they can see how their voice is shaping the, the process as a whole and, and what other families are saying as well, of course, in, in a way that's anonymized and really protects the privacy of families. Our hope is to start to then distill themes from that feedback and really use that to inform Stage Two, which, as Dr. McMillan said, what happened in the, the start of 2024, where that feedback then will really go into informing new possible boundaries and new possible policies in, in Winston-Salem. We've developed some tools to help us more efficiently explore the different ways boundaries can be drawn to foster more diverse and integrated schools. And so we'll be factoring in this feedback in Stage Two, going back to the community to kind of hear their thoughts on possible boundaries. And then really, once we get more of their feedback on those boundaries, factor that in to refine the boundaries to make sure that they're kind of reflecting what, what the community would like. So it's going to be a really dynamic and iterative process, and, and we're looking forward to this great partnership to make it happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Delany. So I did want to just add really quickly that, really excited about this work because one of the metrics that's not listed, you know, we talk about feeder patterns, we talk about more diverse schools, we talk about transportation. One of the things that's not on there is you really like inefficient transportation routes. So what we have right now, because we have this great opportunity for a win-win, Dr. McMillan said that maybe not everyone's going to be happy. I have a very positive view of this. I think that what we end up with is going to make everybody a lot happier than what we have now. So we have that modernization piece that's going to help us have something that's going to work for everybody. So thank you.
I live with a tall person, so I'm kind of used to adjusting. And so that is really where we are with the project and the work that we're doing around Foster and Diverse Schools. There has been a website that has been created, and so as families.
Not sure if anyone's speaking, but I don't think we're able to hear. Yeah, we haven't been able to hear. So sorry if we missed anything.
Sorry, sorry. Okay, I unmuted myself. I apologize.
Okay, cool.
So that does give an update of the work. I will say, as families, so we did create a website. Our project director, Whitney Middlebrooks, is here. I don't think she was here at the last one. She just really started like, right, just a couple of months ago, and you met Rachel Midget. She's our GIS mapping coordinator for this project. So they've been working really tirelessly, have created a webpage. So as families complete the survey and engage in the other process, we're asking them, how do you want to continue staying informed on the work? What else do you want to participate in? So we're gathering that information too, and can constantly keep families informed. They will be able to go to that webpage. Right now, it's just a kind of a, I won't say a skeleton, it has just preliminary information, just what the granny is and, and that type of thing. But as we start getting data and doing more, the locations of in-person and all of that stuff, they will be able to find, that will be a one-stop shop for them to be able to go and get that information. So we're continuing all of that. That will be happening. So I will pause there for questions.
Board Member Kane.
This is not a question. It is just a thank you because you guys have really listened to the Steering Committee and to the request to, to really honor the need to listen to the voices in the community. And that just really means a lot, and I appreciate that. I appreciate all the work that y'all are doing, and I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you so much. Vice Chair Bohannon?
Thank you. Just a couple of questions. So Urban Strategies, I know there was mention about the helping the city. Is, are you, is Urban Strategies helping the city on the Choice Neighborhoods Initiative? Is that the initiative that they're helping with?
Yes, that is correct.
All right. That, that makes me happy. And in part because I, I, there's been conversation before, as I'm sure you know, Dr. McMillan, about making sure that we're capturing the voice of the community as a whole. But I think historically that, that also, that means all voices, but I think also that means voices that typically are not heard. And then my next question is, when is the last time there was a substantive shift in our boundaries?
Since the mid 1990s.
Do we have that exact year?
1994.
Oh, the year I was born. Okay.
9495 was, I hope I'm quoting that correctly, around that timeframe of when implementation actually started. Yes.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks so much.
Next, Andrew Kraft, Director of Arts and Extended Learning, and Dr. Paula Wilkins, our Chief, Chief Academic Officer, will discuss the MOU for before and after-school providers.
All right. Good evening again, Distinguished Board, Madam Chair, Vice Chair Bohannon, Superintendent McManus. We are here tonight to discuss the MOU for before and after-care providers for the 2024-2025 school year. The WSFCS Board of Education has a longstanding relationship with multiple community partners for serving our students in before and after, after-school program services in our schools. Alphabet imprint cares Sherman Academy and the YMCA of Northwest North Carolina Incorporated desire to continue supporting schools with high-quality before and after-care enrichment services. The proposal for before-after school includes support services with these four providers, Alphabet, Imprintz Cares, Sherman Academy, and the YMCA. These providers will provide private-pay services for families needing before and after-school services. Each organization has agreed to a set of terms of fees and expectations for using WSFCS facilities. WSFCS will work to provide opportunities and search for funding sources for students needing scholarship for services, as well as work with the providers to support our students. And how the selection process works, the last April, the Extended Learning Department had, it was almost like a pitch meeting over teams for the principals, where all the providers were, had about 10 minutes to give their spiel, talk about their curriculum, how the hiring practices, fees, all those things. And so each, the principals were able to hear each group, and we recorded it. For any principals that couldn't come, and then they had a two-week window after that where they could reach out to the providers, or they could watch the video, and they could reach out to us for questions as well. So after that two-week window, along with some follow-up, here are the providers that were selected for the MOU and those schools. Are there any questions?
Any questions, comments? Yes.
I just have one comment. Thank you all for, we've got all the middle, I mean, elementary schools covered. I would like to see that we have every zone covered for the middle schools next year. I know we can't do that this year, but I would like to see at least one from every zone covered for next year.
Noted. Thank you.
Vice Chair Bohannon?
Thank you. So I, I wanted to ask, so I saw on some of the, the contracts or the MOUs that some of the vendors are sort of private pay. And for students who want to be involved, like want to be part, like are there, what's the procedure for if they can't pay out of pocket? Like what's, does each vendor have their own process, or how does that work?
So there, there, each vendor has a process where they work with the families, almost like a sliding scale based on income and financial need. So that is worked out with the vendor, yes.
Any other? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, Dr. Paula Wilkins will also update, excuse me, on the Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools' vision for learning and teaching.
Good evening, members of the Board and Superintendent McManus. We are excited to continue to talk about our journey to support our students to be future-ready. And for today, we just want to talk through two things, to share the components of our vision for learning and teaching, and review some resources that you can peruse later that we provided to support schools as we continue on the journey. So when we talk about numbers, we've talked a lot about how the teaching profession is changing. We have over 70% of those entering the profession who are not entering from a traditional license standpoint. So that's almost five out of 100 folks who are not coming on a traditional path. And with that, we've talked as a system, how do we provide clarity to ensure that they have the supports and tools to understand what it means to, to be, to have instructional excellence in your classroom and to facilitate learning. And so you've probably seen this somewhere along the way. A lot of times when we ask folks, have you seen our teaching and learning framework? Usually we get, yeah, the grid box. And that's about as far as we have kind of gotten with that. We've had it in place since 2020, and this was our start. It was an aspirational vision of thinking about where are we as, as a system. And now what we want to do is how do we make this work actionable? And so our team has worked together, and I'll talk about our process, to ensure that we can think about how we make this actionable to ensure deeper learning is happening for every student every day. And so I know if you've read the work of Brene Brown, she talks about clear is kind and unclear is unkind. And so we want to be in a space that we are kind and supportive of our educators instead of having them to search and figure out, what do I do in classrooms? How do I know if the instruction that I'm providing is effective? So if you haven't seen our new updated Portrait of a Graduate to Support Our Future-Ready Work, well, here it is. You've heard us talk about how we're ensuring all students are prepared today with the skills for a changing tomorrow. So our vision for learning and teaching uses our future-ready work as our why. It is what we are vying for to ensure that all of our students leave school pre-K-12 with those skills. Our vision for learning is the what. It defines what deeper learning is, and it tells what are the core tenets and attributes of deeper learning. And the vision for teaching is our how, which is the part of our whole, we call it the VLT, the Vision for Learning and Teaching. And so we also have our teacher support model, which is all around, how do we provide coaching support to ensure that this happens? So just like with any good implementation, you want to have a theory of change. So we believe if we focus on deeper learning and a positive school culture, so that every student has the equitable access and opportunity to gain the durable skills and be future-ready, they'll be prepared to enroll, enlist, and employ. So that's what we're vying for, and we want to make that the anchor of all that we're doing. So when we started this work a year ago, when you all approved our Winston-Salem Forsyth County Portrait of a Graduate, we used someone else's definition because we hadn't developed ours, and it was Patel for Kids through our partnership. And the focus of that work was on how do we develop the skills and mindsets through the integration of academic content to get to deeper learning for our students. Well, since then, and starting with that definition, we asked our leaders, what does deeper learning look like? We asked them at the School Leadership Institute in 2023, and then we started a work group. We wanted to build on that feedback. That work group worked for the entire fall and part of the spring. That work group worked for the entire fall and part of the spring semester. And then we launched what is now what we are sharing with you as the Vision for Learning and Teaching. We had a small group that also worked on the deeper learning definition. In all the groups, we had teachers as a part of it, as well as leaders and central office staff. Because to do this work for our students, everyone must be engaged, and you all should have a copy, and if you do not, we're happy to get you one. So if you will notice, the first part in the VLT, the Vision for Learning, we define deeper learning, which is helping our students be engaged in experiences that intentionally integrate academic content with the strategies that cultivate those durable skills in our portrait. To do this, learning must be realistic and authentic, rigorous and complex, respectful and representative of all, and rooted in curiosity and reflection. If we do all these things, this will help our students attain the durable skills of our portrait. To help support this, we believe it's critical to ensure that we clarify the roles of every single stakeholder in this partnership. So we have an expectation for our learners in deeper learning, our educators and our leaders. And supporting with that is also our families and communities. And if you get to dive deeper, you will see those expectations, and each one of those are aligned to our durable skills within the portrait. So if we know this is our vision for learning, how do we make this practical and an application for teaching? We know teaching has to shift. It cannot be, I'm here to teach and pour knowledge in your head. So as we shifted this approach, and we're working to shift this approach, we're talking about how do we provide a framework to help instructors and educators see how we design, facilitate, and assess instruction? And through this process, as we talked about those four attributes about deeper learning, we're going to reflect and adjust along the way during that learning process. To support educators, we've also created a deeper dive tool, which has a series of questions and reflections to help support in the planning and execution process during learning. And then last, but definitely not least, to make it happen, there must be ongoing feedback, continuous coaching. And so we've aligned this with our coaching model as we look at the district leaders supporting and coaches supporting our instructional leadership teams in schools. And what does that look like in the services that we provide coaching and support to live the vision of the VLT? So what's next for us? If you are able to peruse at your leisure, we've started to organize all the resources into a website. So as we roll out supports for schools that they can go and provide to their staff, we want that to be in an easy manner that they can provide. And so we have organized those in a way so they have ready-made access for staff meetings, for professional learning teams, and then for conversations as they work with their staff as well. This is a timeline that shows where are we going with our vision for learning and teaching, and what will both this summer and fall look like. And then we talked about the Future Ready Learning Labs. Well, we have over 65 teachers who have taken on the call, and we have applications for some additional schools that did not submit earlier. And so we think we're going to get to our 81 minimally teachers being a part of the Learning Lab experience to help us live the vision of the VLT and to be support to other staffs at their school. How can I support with questions?
Any questions?
Yes.
Board Member Watts?
First of all, thank you for all this work. I think if I was a beginning teacher, I would feel greatly supported. My own suggestion would be, would you, have you looked at aligning the teacher valuation instrument to that other chart that I saw about using the language?
So that is kind of a next step for us as we continue to develop support tools. I know we wanted, we had urgency around being able to help to roll and provide support to leaders to work with at first, and then we will provide more support as we continue to roll with teachers and our district leadership developments, et cetera. But thank you very much. That was also raised, it's in the works.
Board Member Cune?
I have a few questions. So I know that we have teachers right now that are in retesting, and so I think one of my questions is, how do we balance this? Because this initiative is good, obviously, I believe in deeper learning. But how, how are we going to balance this with some of the state pacing that comes with tested subjects? Because I feel like that is going to be a question maybe that some of our educators have. So how are we going to work with that? Because sometimes in tested pacing, you don't have as much time to go deep, like this is wanting us to do. It's needed, but it's not always allowed with time of pacing. So how are, how are we going to work with that?
So one piece that we're working on as a division is, how do we begin to integrate more concepts to give teachers back time, right? And so some of that in our professional learnings, as well as in our unit planning organizers, and we're providing exemplars to help to do more integration. So we can see time as an asset through looking at multiple standards to help students with inquiry-based learning and to support them not seeing learning in isolation. So one of the things that I think we have all grappled with, even on our team, is how do we help students get rich knowledge through integration instead of your science block, your social studies block, your ELA block? We're doing that work simultaneously, and we use academic content to support. Academic content is not the driver. So in answering your question, we have to think differently on how we use academic content as a support, and that's been a clear thing that we are really working on as a system to help support schools in that mindset shift, because that's a mindset shift.
Okay. And then when it's talking about, sorry, on this slide that has the time with like the coaching and the planning, and then there's lots of layers of that. I know right now there is a disconnect with teacher planning, even having enough time currently. And I'm just wondering how we're going to work through that and then work through admin having time to work with the coaches and then work, like, we're already struggling in those areas, so how are we, what is the plan to overcome that?
So some of that is just going to be scheduling the time, right? So if you are a principal and your caseload for you will be beginning teachers, throwing that out there. So how do we create the time for planning with your coach, the time for planning in PLT? So we have to think about time in our touch points a little differently. And so for us, we'll be meeting with ILTs collectively to have a focused problem of practice with our coaching model. So we can't tackle everything at one time. And so a part of this with the VLT will be, what is the focus entry point? So it might be beginning teachers, it might be a focus on inquiry-based science. So we have to get clear and to take something off of schools' plates by helping to lead in a way that we say, if mindsets and skills are the biggest piece, we support it through academic content. It's no longer the driver.
Okay, and I guess that was my, what I was getting at, we're willing to take things off the plate.
Absolutely.
So when, when will we know what we're removing? Or will we know what's being removed from the plate of folks so that we can accomplish the goal? Does that make sense?
It does. I think as we talk more about the coaching cycles and the process that we're doing with schools, so we'll do six week cycles where there will be a focused problem of practice, right? And so that will help us as a school define, what are you looking for? And what's the focus and who's supporting you? So that we can really get clear on how we see incremental goals and progress, because we have to do it in baby steps. And even for us, where we have some places where learning is very teacher-centered, it's a baby step process. You don't go from teacher-centered to very learner-centered, very inquiry-based, asking questions without it being a process. And so for us, the message is about what's the next step? What's the next transition? And giving individuals grace to try to take risk and to support them.
I think too around time, because I think you're also asking, are we as a system, I think, tell me if I'm right, trying to find ways to increase teacher planning time to be able to do this work? Is that what your question?
That is, yeah, part of it.
I think that, and that is an ongoing conversation. I know right now it's built into school days in most cases, it's probably a certain amount of time each day. That's not enough when we think about what we are expecting of our teachers. So I do know we're in discovery mode in a couple of places. One is at Flat Rock, I mean, not Flat Rock, Philo. I'm so sorry. Philo. They're part of Con Oak Middle. Thank you. Third time's a charm, Con Oak Middle. Looking at some very creative staffing schedules this year, they're working with a partner, the Innovation Project, to try to figure out, could we do something different where teachers, students are in school five days a week, teachers are, our schedules are shifted so where teachers get a planning day a week? Like, so we're, we're going to try that this, we're going to pilot some innovation this year there. Mineral Springs is also looking at that. So we can learn from that and figure out, are there other things to do? Because again, kids need to be in school five days a week, and they need to be engaged in learning. But we can start to be creative and out of the box when it comes to freeing up time for planning. I think so. We're looking at new ways of thinking. I think we got, we do need to start thinking out of the box and scheduling. And so that, but then also, and you all know, because you all were, you know, were engaged in approving calendars where we said we wanted to make sure teachers have at the end of a quarter a full day of planning before the next quarter. And so those days are built in. Now, that's not the ongoing planning, but that is at least a day of uninterrupted time for teachers to plan. But I'll say it's, I think it's, it's, we've got, if we could free up that time, the kind of learning we want to see in classrooms could happen at a faster rate, because teachers need the time to create lessons that are getting to deeper learning for our kids. So yes, we're looking at models. We'll come forward with some of the examples of how that starts to roll out with those two schools that are piloting.
Board Member Crowley?
Yes, I, you had a slide that says 70%, and I understand that's people entering the teaching profession unlicensed. And then you said five out of 100. What's the five?
One out of five, sorry. One out of five teachers is not traditionally licensed, just system-wide, like that's overall. So one is newly entered the profession, and then that's a overall one out of five is not coming in on a traditional path for licensure. Does that make sense? One was beginning teachers only. The second was as a system.
70% of our beginning teachers.
Are not initially licensed. That is correct. Meaning in a college and university.
But then the five out of 100 are...
No, I said one out of five. I might have said 100, but one out of five teachers.
Well, the slide says five out of 100. So I'm just trying to figure, that's where I'm...
That was probably me. The second one is all teachers, the first one is new teachers.
Okay, so it's 70% of new teachers and five...
Five out of 100 of all teachers are not on a traditional, like, they didn't come in on the traditional path, like four-year university, getting licensed to teach.
Okay.
So those two numbers really don't correlate.
They don't...
No, they're two different numbers. One is new teachers, one is all teachers, yes.
Correct.
Okay.
But the picture is to remember, everybody is not traditionally trained through a university as a teacher, and so we have to think differently about their support.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. I think you're still up.
I'm still up.
Dr. Wilkins, and then Thomas Krantz, our Chief Finance Officer, will discuss the 2024-2025 diagnostic resource purchase.
All right. So we have come to you before around our diagnostic and our screening assessment and supplemental tools before, and so just want to give a little historical context to connect from last year and where we are this year. So in 2019, the system began to support a universal diagnostic for supplemental and a supplemental instructional tool for both math and reading for all elementary and middle schools. And this was through iReady, which began in 2019. And for the system, this was over $1.3 million cost. The goal was to ensure that all schools had a consistent data source to analyze student progress and achievement in those two areas of math and reading. This purchase was for both the diagnostic and supplemental, but it did not include high schools. So every year we've come to you to ask about supplemental and the diagnostic, it was only for elementary and middle schools. So let's talk diagnostic screeners. They provide reliable sources of consistent data around student progress and learning needs. They're usually administered beginning of the year, middle of the year, and end of year. We provide reports to you about that data as we update you throughout the year. The district uses that data to think about gaps and helps us focus on professional learning needs for schools and our feedback and support as well. Currently, iReady has used K8 for reading and math as the diagnostic. The state of North Carolina has approved K3 as a universal screener for DIBELS. So DIBELS 8, and by the way, in the short session of the legislature, there's discussion to move to the universal screener for 4-5 for DIBELS. And if that is legislation, we will move that way as well as a system. DIBELS 8 has three uses: to think about how do we identify the students who are at risk of reading difficulty by screening them three times a year, documenting their progress on reading skills on a continuum of focused skills, and thinking about what interventions and supports, and also providing a tool for progress monitoring. It provides minimum levels of performance. It is not about proficiency. This is about analyzing the reading needs and looking at foundational skills for becoming a proficient reader based on benchmark goals and timelines. iReady, on the other hand, as a diagnostic, is an adaptive assessment. It identifies students' strengths and their instructional needs, and it measures their growth and supports data-driven differentiated instruction through its supplemental tool, which the district also provides to schools as well. It provides some insight, K-12, on skills to help students meet those skills as expected on a timeline for grade levels. It's administered three times a year as well. NWA MAP is a universal screener as well. It's adaptive, just like iReady, and it looks at students' responses in real time, adjusts difficulty as well. It's aligned to our state standards, and if you look at its normative data, it has a large data sample that helps us look at comparisons of students on a continuum. And then it is nationally recognized. And the reason we're sharing about NWA MAP is because it's one of the universal screeners we've explored to look at supporting our high schools. So the recommendation is looking at continuing, of course, with the state for DIBELS for K3 and moving to 4-5 for reading, continuing the iReady diagnostic for 6 through 8 for reading and math and for K5 math, and then moving for reading and math or literacy and math for NWA math for next year. And in the board materials, you see our previous cost of $1.3 million, moving only to a diagnostic, it will save the district funding, with, of course, increasing the cost because we will be adding on high school only, but the overall cost will decrease. Elementary schools have used the supplemental tool with iReady more than any level, and so we know that would be a shift, taking away the district, continuing to fund that supplemental support. And so we've recommended looking at ways that we can provide an allocation, working through finance for elementary schools to help to offset the cost of a supplemental tool. For middle schools, because iReady as a partner has looked at ways to pilot the platform to make it more engaging for middle schools versus the elementary platform, and they've agreed to provide support for our non-proficient students based on the diagnostic with the supplemental tool. And then for high schools, this would be a new screener that we're recommending for use to give us more data about supporting high schools, because we don't have a universal tool for that. Here's the timeline. We started this conversation with schools back in March about the need to look at, how does a district use funding to help continue to get universal data through a screener or a diagnostic? We thought about budget considerations, this was during the budget timeline as well, to see what the district could really support. We had discussion with vendors, we looked at what they provided, what they could support. The district finalized that recommendation, and of course, we're here to talk to you, but we had a meeting with schools about both the recommendation and with the vendors to think about if they were going to continue with their own supplemental supports, what do they need? What supports could be provided to the, by the vendors to meet their needs? So for elementary, the district will provide an allotment. Middle school, we're getting some support through a vendor. And then high school, we're not able to take that on at this point. And so the goal is to provide this recommendation to you today with the approval to move forward with the diagnostic, and then working with schools to get price-volume discount, because the more schools that do purchase, the discounts that they can receive, that will offset the costs they'll have to pay. And these are the recommendations, as I mentioned before, for moving forward. What questions do you have?
Yes, Board Member Watts?
What if we really think outside the box and decrease all of this testing? I just feel in my heart that we are over-testing our students, and we're stressing our teachers out. I know we need data, I understand, but I just, when I'm visiting these schools a lot, it's either iReady, diagnostic... it's either iReady, diagnos, or they're doing something else, some kind of testing something else that's not related to EOGs or EOCs. And I wonder if we could really free up teachers to teach and let them be the professionals in the classroom. I know we've got to have something, but I just, in my heart, I just feel weird, it's too much. And I would like to, for us at least, to think about how we can maybe do something differently or open up spaces where we can really use teachers, especially at the elementary level, to say, hey, I know my kids best, and I know what they need, and hold them accountable to that kind of, if we decide to free them up some more.
Yeah, can we, Andy or Paula or both of you, could you all, not, you don't have to answer now, but get a list of every test given now? Like, from the pre-assessments to the check-ins, so that the board, you all can see it at a glance? Because I think you're spot on. If we can start reducing that.
Board Member Kuhn.
And can I make a comment? So a couple of things that we're looking at from a formative lens is how do we eliminate any additional testing? The other piece with elimination of the supplemental support, that is taken away, that's not testing, but that was time that students would be engaged in additional practice, right, on skills, that we would be removing because the district is no longer funding that piece. So that is a time shift. It's not assessment specifically, but we're looking at places, how do we get better aligned to our focus on deeper learning? And that's not assessment.
And Mr. McManus mentioned really the check-ins. I mean, I know that's not really part, but we're doing a lot of weekly check-ins. And, weekly check-ins. I'm not, and I'm wondering where that is and how that fits into the process. Because it seems like every time I go to a school, Mr. Watts, I did great on my check-in today. I did great on, like, okay, well, where is the teaching? If all we're doing is check-ins and little things in between that may not be, quote, aligned or suggested? But that's what's going on in a lot of our elementary schools.
So you think this is additional that schools are placing on? Okay, I'd love to.
Well, they call it check-ins. And I'm not sure, you know, my students come back and say, Miss, well, I just did great on my check-in today. I did great on my reading check-in. I did great on my, like, how many check-ins do you have in the course of a week? But anecdotal data.
Board Member Kuhn?
To Board Member Watts's point, when we, I think we approved it, or we're gonna approve it tonight, the contract for Discovery Ed, it encompasses DreamBox, right?
So, no. So they're owned by the same entity, but it does, it is not a part of our agreement.
So we are not gonna have access to DreamBox anymore?
Well, not through that particular partnership with Discovery Ed. So Discovery Ed was its own company before it was bought out by DreamBox. DreamBox is a product that is still offered. They're just under the same company.
Ah, okay. I thought that that was encompassed in there.
No.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you. Next, Rebecca Olson, the multilingual learner and instructional coach, and Brad Oliver, our multilingual learner interim support director of Exec, and executive learning, will discuss the Elevation contract.
Good evening, board members. Madam Chair, Superintendent McManus. I'm Rebecca Olson. I am a multilingual learner coach with the multilingual learner department, and I'm happy to be here today to advocate on behalf of our ESL teachers for the continuation of our Elevation software contract. I have with me here today my colleague, Dr. Victoria Hantle, and she's gonna speak for a moment about her experience as a user of this program.
Good evening, board and Superintendent McManus. I am Dr. Victoria Hantle. I'm the multilingual coordinator and ESL instructor at East Forsyth Middle School with Principal Bangum. Elevation is a school-wide, user-friendly database that allows collaboration between core classroom teachers and the ESL team. And one of my colleagues simply described Elevation as a wonderful, simple tool. At the start of the 2023-24 school year, I and my colleagues in the ESL department, we were able to go in to each grade-level meeting and train all of the core-level teachers. When we trained them, we showed them how to enter Elevation. We trained them how to use the product, how to see their dashboard, how to immediately see the number of multilingual learners in their classroom, how to see their individual access scores, thereby allowing each core teacher the ability to differentiate instruction, see their testing accommodations, and to see their instructional modifications. Once they have this information, when the students enter the classroom, they will know what students can do. This particular product, Elevation, it details what all of our multilingual learners can do. So if we have Little Johnny, Little Johnny's in the room, and they can click on his name, and they can see, is Little Johnny able to write a sentence? Is he able to write a paragraph? And this aids our teachers on each level with differentiating their instruction, and it's simply just that easy. So we're here to implore you to please renew this product because all of our colleagues in the ESL departments across the district, our testing coordinators are able to easily download review of accommodations for all of those wonderful check-ins and get our students tested so they can receive their accommodations. Once again, it's just that easy. So now I'm gonna pass things back to Mrs. Rebecca Olson, our multilingual learner coach.
So why do we need this program?
We need this program because we have over 8,000 multilingual learners in our district. We have about over 1,500 newcomers. So those are students who are in year one or year two in US schools, and at the very beginning stages of English language acquisition. We have almost 1,000 students who are former MLs and are monitored because we're required to monitor them for four years after they're exiting our programs, after they exit. We have 150 ESL teachers in assistance, thereabouts, and we have 108 different languages represented in our student body. Oh, and all of that information came via Elevation. Here is some historic data for you. Now, just a point of clarification. This data came from Power School, since we've only been using Elevation since January of last year. You'll see there that this graph uses the term EL or English learner. So the federal government and Power School are still using the term English learner or EL. Our state and our district and Elevation are using ML or multilingual learner. For our purposes tonight, they are synonymous. The other acronym you see there is NOM, Students or National Origin Minority. So those are students who speak a language other than English at home. That would include our students who are being actively served as MLs, our students who have exited, and also any students who came in and had a little bit of English language and perhaps didn't need our programming at the time. So that's quite a larger number, and I think it's important that we see that. So Elevation is in place in over 40 states and 600 districts. Our implementation timeline, we had intended to begin the year last year with the software in place. It didn't happen for one reason or another. So it was actually January before we were able to roll this out. We had some temporary measures in place at the beginning of the year. But we were able to get teachers trained and ML plans created and ROAs generated for end-of-year testing. We offered as a department what we called Open Doors, where we had full days that teachers could log in at any point and access one of the ML coaches in order to get help with the software or with writing their ML plans. The software is fairly intuitive, I will say. It doesn't take a whole lot of training to figure out how to navigate it, and our teachers have really expressed that they absolutely love it. So here are some ways that Elevation allows us to better serve this student group. The first is just tracking and compliance. So making sure that each of these students has access to those resources that we are federally and locally required to provide for them. Instructional supports, which are built in, and that's for ESL teachers as well as classroom teachers. Testing accommodations and instructional modifications, and then parent communication, which again is another federal and state requirement. So one of the things we love about Elevation is just all the data. It is just a great warehouse of data. And any of our stakeholders in our district can request access. So we have social workers and guidance counselors, and they all love the individual student profile, which I'll show you in a little bit. But all of this data is in one place. Our level and service of hours, our accommodations and modifications, our parent communication, it's all housed in this one database. What that allows us to do as a district is to monitor that we are meeting our requirements and providing plans for students. So this year, we had some schools, for one reason or another. Maybe they had a teacher who was out, and they weren't able to complete plans. We're able to see that at the district level and offer support to that school and help that school create those plans and make sure that those pieces are in place for students. It also helps us with monitoring our former MLs. So we are required to monitor for four years. Prior to the adoption of this software, we really did not have a way to give teachers access to this data. If the students were not rostered in a class in Power School, they could not see their information, which means they didn't have their assessments, they didn't have parent contacts. So this software solves that issue for us. And again, it's just helped us to be able to collect that data when we're audited every few years. Other supports are instructional supports. So the software populates individual learner profiles, and it has their demographics. It has their can-dos. You heard Dr. Hantle mention the can-dos. Those are a matrix of English language development. So it says, it tells us where the student is currently operating, but also goals we should work towards. So that's really great as teachers are planning and they're looking at how to accommodate or make changes within their lessons to give students access. This software provides keys to that so that we can make sure that every student in our classroom is learning. It also documents our service levels for compliance and for things like allotment, which we used Elevation to create this year. So Elevation also allows us to create our testing accommodations and instructional modifications. Our ROAs are included. We love that it's integrated with Clever, so it's that single sign-on. It's also fed by Power School. When we have a plan in place, we know that Infinite Campus is coming soon, and so we have a plan in place for that. And it allows us to eliminate some of the paperwork, honestly, that we've done in the past. So part of our enhanced usage plan for next year is something called Forms, which essentially is kind of like a DocuSign, where it is an electronic signature for teachers. But it also has a built-in feedback mechanism. So teachers can give feedback about students' plans and make those modifications before signing off. What that's gonna do is, for a school like, say, Parkland, who has 660-some MLs and former MLs, each of those students has a three-to-five-page plan and eight-to-10, eight-to-12 teachers that are required to see that plan. It's literally gonna save us thousands of copies to be able to have electronic access, which I think our teachers will appreciate. And of course, if they want to print it, they can print it. In addition, it helps us with our compliance in regards to parent communication. So the software is generating all of our notifications for us, as well as our plans. It stores those year to year, so we've got an electronic version. Teachers can add notes, which will also follow the student from middle school to high school. There's lots of different reports. And this is great if, for example, if you had a student who was an Arabic speaker and was the only Arabic speaker in their grade level at that school, we can easily go pull a cohort of their peers to compare their growth to. And a cohort of their peers would be someone who entered at the same year, is at the same grade level, and speaks the same native language. So if we're concerned about that student's growth or if we're having retention conversations, we can go and pull that cohort to compare and really see how that student is doing. In addition, Elevation has built-in translation for their forms. Now, they don't have the translation as of yet for the ML plans. That's something that they're working on. That will require us to craft some language likely. But they do currently have 20 different languages included, and they're continuing to add as we go about. So that takes some of the burden off of our translation and interpretation team in making those transference. This is our specialist dashboard view. So my colleague, Tamara Coburn, spent a year working with our elevation rep, building this out and putting in all of the data. And each of these tiles, you can actually click on and dig down into the data. So this is what we see at the district level. And I will say, Elevation has been absolutely fabulous. Anytime we wanted to personalize or make a change, our rep has said, let me take it to the developers. We'll work on that. That's a great idea. And they've really let us make this do what we needed it to do. Here's the individual student profile that I mentioned that everyone loves. So what you see there is access data over time, but we also have iReady data, EOGs, anything that's pulled in from Power School. With just a click, you can change and see the graph. So again, we ask that you would consider the continuation of the software because it does allow us to monitor our students and make sure that the things that we have in place are effective so that we can close that achievement gap. So we request that you approve the continuation or the renewal of the contract for Elevation for the 2024-2025 school year.
Yes, Vice President Bohannon, do you have a question?
Thank you. So I wanted to ask, I was curious because this seems like, a program like this, it fills so many gaps relative to our ML students. And I wondered, at what point, what was the process in kind of figuring out to even go with Elevation in the first place? Because I know it seemed, because we've had multilanguage learners for years. So could you give some of that history as to how we kind of arrived to Elevation?
Prior to David Sisk, he pulled together about three different programs, and then he asked for different teacher leaders to serve on focus groups. And then those companies presented to the teacher leaders of our district. And we looked at the needs of our multilingual learners and to see which product could help us the best. And so we selected this product because we saw that it interfaced with Power School. We saw that it was easy to use. We thought that our core teachers, which is the biggest thing, our core teachers, when they have a newcomer that just arrived to the United States, they need something quick and easy. And this is that program that as soon as that student is enrolled in Power School, the information is pulled over to Elevation, and they can see their information immediately to know how to place that student and get that student working in the classroom. And that is how we selected this, with teacher leader focus groups.
Okay, thank you. And then I also know that even after you select the product, you have to have staff to kind of, like you said, to build out the dashboards and things like that. So thank you so much for the work of your team. I appreciate it.
Board Member Watts? Oh, yeah.
Again, I agree with Dr. Bohannon. Mr. Board Member Bohannon, thank you, sir. I agree, excellent. My only, nothing with the program. I wonder how can we take the same concept of Elevation and use it for our K3 students who are perhaps low or not proficient in reading and math, to put all of it in one place so that that regular ed teacher can have the same type of information that we're doing with our MLs? Because I think that would be a great way to kind of pull all this together. I mean, just, just simple, something to think about.
Board Member Crowley?
So we're currently using this program. Are we using it in every school? We are.
So, and so in terms of usage, this year, our goal was training ESL teachers. And next year, our goal will be ESL teachers training core classroom teachers. So they've had access. It is on the Clever app, so they can get into it at any point. But we're, we have a plan for rolling out more widespread uses, usage within classrooms next year.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I just want to address, we have unified insights for all of our students. That historical data is housed. The difference is Elevation has additional pieces around plans and support that merges that data, which unify insights, doesn't. So to your point, for other students and other assessments, that is housed. So we do have that available. So I didn't want you to think we didn't have it available for all students.
Well, thank you, because I, we, thank you. We'll have other questions after the meeting.
Okay.
Board Member Wood?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I'm interested in data, too, on this point. You said data is one thing you like to deal with. I was impressed by the figure, 8,000 multilingual learners in the district. That's a hefty percentage.
And growing by the day. So for the past three years, we have surpassed our enrollment at our Newcomer Registration Center by February. So we've surpassed the numbers the year before by February. Three years running, yes, sir.
One additional question. That is, we have 108 different languages in the student body, corporate student body?
Yes, sir.
We don't have time for all 100. If you could enumerate all 108, but.
You want the top five?
Could you, the top five. That's exactly what I was gonna ask.
So our top five are Spanish, Vietnamese, Chinese, which would include Mandarin and Cantonese, Karini, and what did I miss? Arabic, sorry, Arabic.
What is the last two?
So Karini, they are a population of refugees from Burma and Thailand that came probably 15, 20 years ago. We're actually getting the students of families that we had originally in the 90s. And then Arabic is the other one that I mentioned, yeah.
It's number five. One more question.
Okay.
We can't go through all the rest of 108, but what is 108?
Oh, jeez. Well, so I can, I don't know if I can say that. We have some that, like, I know we have a mom. We have some that, like, I know we have a Maas speaker, we have, we've gotten quite a few Kenya-Wanda speakers from Rwanda. It changes by the year because we do work with World Relief, who is our resettlement agency here in the district. And so it really just depends on what's happening globally around the world. So national, you know, international events that are happening and which populations are resettled. So it changes, yeah. And then some are dialects, that's true as well. So it just, it just depends on what is happening around the world, honestly, each year.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you so much. Next, Deion Jenkins, our chief legal counsel, will present the proposed 2024-2025 SRO contracts.
Good evening, Chair Kaplan, Vice Chair Bohannon, board members, and Superintendent McManus. I'm going to provide you a brief overview of both our Kernersville Police Department and Forsyth County Sheriff's Officers' SRO contracts, the proposed contracts for the upcoming school year. If you have questions about the contract, I'm happy to answer them. However, I also have Jonathan Wilson, who is our Chief of Safety and Security here, who can answer any programmatic questions that I'm not able to answer, as well as Captain Rick Ammons and Captain Damian Meritz, who are here as well, who supervise the SROs and can answer any questions that we're not able to answer. I know that you had some preliminary information and you have a copy of the contracts. One of the great things this year is we synthesized the nuances that were in the two previous contracts, and so now they are virtually identical with the exception of the sections that identify the schools that they're in and the fees associated with each contract. But as you know, the Kernersville Police Department covers our Kernersville schools, and the Forsyth County Sheriff's Office covers our middle and high schools that are within the Winston-Salem City Limits and elsewhere in the county that's not covered by Kernersville. We have, you know, obviously, the number of officers who are provided by the Sheriff's Officer, Sheriff's Office are higher than the Kernersville Police Department because they serve more schools. And the fees that are associated with the contracts as well differ. For the 24-25 SRO contract for the Sheriff's Department, the fee for that is $4,732,610. And for the Kernersville Police Department, it's $717,264, both of whom have been included as a part of the 24-25 school district budget request. So in addition to that, what I will do is go through and summarize a few other changes to the contract that are new this year, starting with page three. Under page three, there was some language that previously was included under the duties and responsibilities of SROs that referenced a quote-unquote triad model. And that's a model that we've kind of deviated from over the years. And really, the language was removed to, just because it created more confusion, I think, than clarity around what the roles of the SRO officers are. And so we've removed references to this triad model of school resource officer. And we've added language in the contract going on to page five, and forgive me if I'm scrolling too fast, that, under subsection U, that clarifies when an SRO officer should be involved in disciplinary infractions that occur. Obviously, the SRO officer is not the school disciplinarian. That role is left to administrators and to teachers to enforce discipline in the school buildings. But we added language to subsection U here to clarify that SROs should only get involved in more serious egregious offenses that occur on campus or other offenses that rise to some level of a criminal violation. They should not get involved in lower-level offenses, generally levels one through three or maybe even four in the discipline matrix, things that are typically handled at the school level. Then they should not obviously be called as the first responder, so to speak, to address disciplinary infractions that occur in the buildings. So that language was added. We also added, under sub-paragraph W, that SRO officers would assist and participate as needed as a part of the school-based threat assessment teams. As we've mentioned in the past, House Bill 605 passed this year, requires school systems to develop a more robust school-based threat assessment teams, and we are required to have law enforcement representatives as a part of those teams. And so the SROs would be part of that as needed. In addition, if we go to page eight, we included language that would require SRO officers, at the top of the page, number six here, to participate and complete all trainings that we provide as a school district. For the last few years, we've had a training at the beginning of the school year with SROs as well as the school administrators, the principals and the assistant principals for all schools that have an SRO, to do a joint training that goes through all the duties and responsibilities of the SRO officer. We've conducted trainings about our code, we've talked about de-escalation tips and how to respond in the event of a crisis, and we anticipate doing a similar training like that this year, as well as going through the changes in the SRO contract. And so we included language that would require, as well as the threat assessment training that we're going to have to do as well, that would require SRO officers to participate in that training. The next change I want to summarize is on page 12 of the contract. And again, I apologize for scrolling so fast. But here, if I could call your attention to sections D and E. In section D, we upped the frequency of the reports for any criminal offenses that occur on school property. Previously, it said that we would receive reports on a monthly basis, but we've changed that to weekly. And the reason is because that's really how frequently we were getting those reports anyway, and so we just changed it to reflect current practice. But in subsection E, we included language here that's new for the first time, that relates to incidents of pepper spray or fogger usage on school property, as well as any incident that results in a student being handcuffed or otherwise restrained. I'll address the restraint one first. We are required now to report annually to both OCR and the state anytime a student is placed under mechanical restraints, and that includes handcuffs or other types of mechanical restraints that occur on school property. And so we included notification language in here so that we can make sure our reports that are made are accurate. With regard to the pepper spray and fogging, you know, obviously, there have been some incidents where those, where that's been used on school property. And, you know, depending upon how widespread that usage is, you know, it obviously can cause some concerns and alarms about students that might be exposed to it. And so both the SRO, excuse me, the Forsyth County Sheriff's Office and the Kernersville Police Department have committed to us that they would only use a fogging device indoors as somewhat of a last resort, right? Only when other measures are not effective or not feasible, and after giving ample warnings and time for all parties to disperse, would this, would these devices be used. If I want to, if I can call your attention to page 15 of the contract, we also included some language that would establish a more formalized review and complaint process in the event there's a concern that's raised about the conduct or behavior of an SRO officer. They are not school system employees, so ultimately, we don't have control over that employment aspect of an officer. But we would have the ability, under this new language, to be able to have some conversations with the different departments, and if necessary, the superintendent could request that an officer either be removed or moved or somehow not be involved in, with the program if their behavior is more egregious and we're not able to resolve our concerns in some other way. This section was also added because, under the OCR agreement that we entered into in August of this past year, there was language in there requiring the district to develop a more formalized process for resolving any complaints that might arise about performance or behavior of school resource officers. And so those are the bigger changes to the contract. The other changes are, both departments did increase their extraduty fee for officers to serve, like, extracurricular, athletic events, things like that. The Sheriff's Office will assess a rate of $55 an hour for officers and $60 an hour for supervisors. And the Kernersville Police Department is at $50 an hour for officers, $55 for supervisors. So with that, I'll be happy to take any questions.
Vice Chair Bohannon?
This is a technical question, and I feel like this was answered when we first started talking about the usage of the fogger. Why is the usage of the fogger, and this is probably a question for you, Jonathan, why is the usage of the fogger preferential to the usage of the regular pepper spray?
Good evening, by the way. And I appreciate Deion doing this. I was not supposed to be here tonight, so Deion graciously stepped up and did this. She actually did a better job than I would have done already. As far as fogging devices, I think that my partners in the back of the room, they never want to use fogger devices. There is a use for fogger in some cases, it's typically outdoors, in a large crowd, it's to disperse a crowd. I can tell you that there are situations that we have had within our schools where I, in my position, would even say a fogging device was appropriate. And I'm not saying that the ones that we've had were not appropriate. What I'd say is that the personalized smaller can is direct, it affects the person that is involved in the fight, and it does not affect the greater area. I think that there are situations where you cannot get to the fight because there's such a large crowd. We know that students hold up cell phones and everybody wants to video what's happening, and I think that's what occurs many times. So, you know, the fogger has been used. What we've asked is that it be used as a last resort and all other things be, you know, used before we get to that point. But, you know, I can still foresee situations where it could be used, and especially if it's outside. If you're at a football game, you're in a parking lot, you're in a bus lot where it's crowded and you need to disperse a crowd, that is an effective tool to disperse a crowd. It's problematic within a building because of ventilation systems and innocent folks who are bystanders who, you know, may not even, may not even be participating in videoing it, or just nearby, and it just gets in the air.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, Board Member Crowley?
Thank you. The part about SROs not being a disciplinarian, so when SROs do their walks through the schools, if they see an altercation or students cut in class, or they detect smells coming out of a bathroom, are they supposed to just keep walking?
No, no. So this, this language is specifically, I think, for our staff, so that we do not default to, you know, I don't want to deal with this, I'm going to call an SRO, and the SRO is called to deal with it, or I need a student taken out of my classroom and taken down to the office because he or she's been disruptive, let's call an SRO and have them to do that. That is not appropriate. It's not appropriate for them to call because two kids are in a verbal altercation or because a student, a teacher gives a command to a student, you know, you need to move from this area to that area. That's not an appropriate use of the SRO. Now, if an SRO walks down the hallway and sees a fight, or they smell the smell of marijuana coming out of a bathroom, which they very well may in some cases, then that's their duty to act. And I think that they would always take that opportunity to act.
Okay, that's what I wanted to make sure, because the way it sounded is like they're not supposed to initiate any, any discipline, and I would disagree with that. They need to initiate if they're the one, if they're the adult.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't speak for Deion, but I don't think that that was the intent, and all the intent was to not have that the default, but to be the secondary action.
Yeah, our partners have also asked for this to be very clear, because they don't want to be called to disciplinary things that is a classroom disruption that an administrator should handle. So they've asked for that language as well.
Any other questions? Okay, thanks so much. So next, we have, our next order of business is action items. We have eight to consider. First, consider approval of the facility's operating software, the FMX contract renewal. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
So I have a motion by Board Member Crowley, a second by Vice Chair Bohannon. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor. Thank you, that is unanimous. Next, consider approval of the contract for Kick Up for Professional Learning Management System briefed on the May 14, 2024 Board of Education meeting. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
So I have a motion by Board Member Coon, a second by Board Member Miller. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor. Thank you, that is unanimous. Next, consider approval of the Center for Exceptional Children, the CFEC, operating agreement briefed at the May 28, 2024 Finance Committee meeting. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
So I have a motion by Board Member Barr, a second by Board Member Crowley. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor. Opposed? Motion passes eight to one. Next, consider approval of the fiscal year 2024 auditor contract briefed at the May 28 Finance Committee meeting. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
So I have a motion by Board Member Crowley, a second by Vice Chair Bohannon. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor. Thank you, that is unanimous. Next, consider approval of the renewal of Second Step and Wayfinder curriculum contracts briefed at the May 28, 2024 Curriculum Committee meeting. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Do I have a second? So I have a motion by Board Member Crowley, a second by Board Member Watts. Any discussion?
I just, yeah.
Yes, Board Member Miller?
You go ahead.
For the record, I would like to state that I do not support this SEL curriculum. First and foremost, I think it undermines the parent's authority. Secondly, I think teachers have enough on their plates, as we've already discussed, and they are also not trained therapists. And my last point is, I think, as a district, we need to be more focused on our academics, such as reading, math, and science, and not so much on social, emotional, and feelings. This is the parent's job.
Vice Chair Bohannon?
So my discussion is a little bit different.
That's fine.
So I was going to first thank the students who, after not even being in school, decided to show up to a school board meeting and voiced their opinions regarding our social-emotional learning curriculum. I think that for my, for me, I understand the need, like, I feel like a lot of what we do is really connected to each other, and it's hard for students to learn. Like, one of the things that I think plagues us is the, these, the increase of mental, like, health issues amongst our students. It's really hard to learn if you're not able to process your emotions and feelings. I feel like all of that is related together. It's not something that you can separate, because whether or not, kids are growing and developing, the question, I think, is whether or not we want to be part of that. Like, they are learning from somebody or something, what are the ways of processing emotions and dealing with their feelings? And if they're not shown the healthy and positive ways to do that, then they end up, you know, that ends up following them for the rest of their lives. And the reality is, is that all of our children, yes, it should be the parent's job, I agree with Board Member Miller about that, but the reality is that all of our children don't come from the same households with the same levels of support. And so I feel like we have to, a part of, a part of this work is really filling that gap. But the, but the concern I had for the future is that we're making sure that we're implementing this with fidelity. I think that's been a concern that's, that was expressed. I also think, looking at the data, there are some of our schools that really need some, we need to be intentional about making sure that that's being monitored and that it's being utilized, because I also don't want to waste our money on something that's not being implemented.
And, and I, I would like to second what Vice Chair Bohannon just said about the implementation with fidelity. I absolutely believe in SEL. I think what I have been discouraged by is the lack of implementation, and I want to make, ensure that we, as a district, are fiscally responsible. And if we are doing this, we need to use our money wisely. And we need to make sure that the barriers, that the people who are helping implement SEL are removed. Our folks that are doing the work should not be facing barriers when they try to get into the schools to work with them. And if that needs to be worked on as a district, we need to address that.
Any, yes, Board Member Watts?
I also just want to address the fact that sometimes we say parents are absent, but there are other cases where parents are present. And I'm looking at a former parent of mine here in this room today, that her son was greatly beneficial, benefited from having, quote, SEL during the school year with a teacher that had an opening ear to what they were saying at home. They needed, he needed another voice, another place to be listened to. So it's not always about the parents not teaching at home, it's about having another opportunity to express themselves in a different environment. And this former parent who was in the audience will tell you that it was through, quote, SEL that his, her son flourished in middle school because of those experiences and opportunities to share and grow in his own unique self, not because it's not being taught at home, because they needed another place, another venue, another person to help encourage, motivate, and to inspire. So I'm a proponent of all... So, uh, I'm a proponent of all, what we're trying to do to make sure it's, it's all connected. At the end of the day, it's all connected.
Any other questions?
Yes, you know, I think this board knows that there are some concerns about SEL, the program, and, and I guess the foundation, how the program started, and I think what I just need is just some time to really dig down and research that and address those concerns, so, just want to say that.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, we have a, we've had a motion, we've had a second, we've had discussion, all in favor. Those opposed? So motion passes six to three. Next, consider approval of the School Health Alliance contract briefed at the May twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four Board of Education meeting. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
So I have a motion by Board Member Crowley, a second by Board Member Watts, any discussion? Okay, all in favor. Thank you, that's unanimous. Next, consider approval of the contract with Imagine Learning, which is Edgenuity, briefed at the May twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four Board of Education meeting. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
So I have a motion by Board Member Crowley, a second by Board Member Barr, is that correct? Okay. Uh, any discussion?
Yeah, if I may?
Yes.
Um, I mean, this is one of those necessary evils, I feel like. Um, when you looked at the stats for graduation, uh, with this program versus without, it's kind of scary to think where we would be without this.
Yeah.
Um, but with that said, you know, how legitimate is a diploma when it's done through credit recovery? So I, I think it'd be a, a great challenge for our district to, um, to come up with ways to not need this, and I feel like that's in our future with deeper learning and, uh, more CTE and things that, that will really engage our students and help them to want to be at school. But, but make no mistake, I think we recognize what this is, but we, we need to do it right now.
Thank you. Any other questions? Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor. Opposed? Okay.
Is there opposition?
Okay, all in, okay, motion passes unanimously. Next, consider approval of the Discovery Ed subscription briefed at the May twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four Board of Education meeting. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Okay, but, second.
Second.
I have worst, a motion by Board Member Miller, a second by Board Member Watts, any further discussion?
I have a question. Um, is, do we need, like, is DreamBox separate, or should it be within this? Because it was on that sheet in our presentation, and I guess in my assumption, and that was wrong of me to assume, that it was a part of the contract.
So in its form of how they have the, um, the screener tool and the supplemental, no, that is not a part of it. Some of the resources may be integrated now that they're under one umbrella, but we don't, they're two separate products.
Okay.
So we use Discovery Ed for science textbook and for our DLI programs.
I guess when I saw it on that sheet, when it had all of it listed, DreamBox was listed.
Some of their resources are a part of it, but what you're speaking of is how schools currently use DreamBox for diagnostic and supplemental. We will not get that.
Okay, so we would, is that going to come separately?
Not that I know of at this point. So the vendors have not, it, the last meeting, those two products are completely separate. Some of the resource tools are integrated, but not in the form of how we see it, that schools have it now, when they purchase DreamBox.
Okay. Okay, any other questions? All right, all in favor. Opposed? Motion passes eight to one. That concludes our action items. Our next order of business is our superintendent's update.
Thank you. So as you know, we just completed a weekend of graduations, and we had incredible ceremonies. Thank you to our board members for, uh, doing the welcomes at each of those ceremonies. You guys were amazing and brief, much appreciated. It was great. And so that was, we had over thirty-five-hundred graduates, um, participate on this, uh, during, on Thursday, from Thursday to Sunday last week. And with that, um, you can move up, down, we still have a chance for graduates to finish with their cohort through summer graduation. So Thursday, July eighteenth, we will celebrate more graduates at summer graduation. We hope board members will be able to be in attendance. That is at Carver High School. Um, we, coming up, you all received an invite, we are celebrating our retirees, that is next Friday, a week from this Friday, at a celebration. We have about two hundred and seven, uh, folks that are, um, retiring this year, and so we'll be celebrating those folks. So thank you to all of those that have spent so many years, um, in education and as champions for students. Our board will be receiving this, you received one today, and you're going to be receiving this throughout the summer, every week. These are our school-based vacancies as of right now, and so we are going to keep, be keeping track of that every week. Uh, Chris will be sending that report and update, but this kind of gives a, a picture of classroom position, non-classroom classified, and our totals across our eighty-one schools at this point. Bus stop requests, I'm going to remind everyone, um, to please make sure we submit bus stop requests by June twenty-first, so that we can be ready with all of our assignments by August first. Also, we are rolling out, you know, we've been piloting a, um, oh, gosh, I'm going to forget the name, it is not Here Comes the Bus, but it is going to be a new app that will be, um, rolling out. It's, is it right, Lauren? Thank, what is it called? Bus Portal, which will be rolling out to all families, and I think our pilot has been successful with that. We didn't roll it out full steam, full speed until we knew that it would be working well, better than the other, the previous, uh, tool. All right, and also, lastly, back-to-school dates, we've been going over this every update, um, but we need to remember that summer school dates are June twenty-fourth to July eighteen. August first, teachers will be returning to our schools, and August twelfth, first day back for students. So we're excited about that, and, uh, tomorrow is our last day for teachers. Um, students are already home, but teachers tomorrow, but everyone, I'm wishing, we wish everyone a very, very, uh, happy, relaxing, um, and exciting summer. Thank you.
Any comments or questions? Okay, thank you. Tuesday, June twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four will be our next regular meeting of the Board of Education. Before we hear our public comments, let me say to our Cable Two viewers, thank you for watching. This will conclude our broadcast.
Thank you for joining us on Your School Channel, Cable Two.